I gotta get my man.
That was mean. That was real mean.
Was John Lewis?
Is there a gentleman at the sky?
Okay, with that introduction, I would like to call the meeting to a halt. First item would be to read the ethics statement. Board members, Mr. President, and financial and administrative staff, you are reminded that you have a duty to report all conflicts of interest, potential conflicts of interest, and appearances of conflict of interest. Do any of you know or anticipate any conflict of interest, potential conflict of interest, or appearance of conflict of interest regarding the matters on the agenda for today's meeting?
No.
The committee reflect no conflicts were reported. Carolyn? Jean Bell?
Here.
Bruce Briggs?
Here.
Wayne Bregman? Joe Brummett?
Here.
Juan Ed Pritchett?
Here.
Mike Frye?
Here.
Jaclyn Hallen?
Here.
Matt Stern?
Here.
Roger Meckler?
Here.
Keenan Lynn?
Here.
William Murdock? John Harrow? Francis Ramsey?
Yes.
Mary Ann Rice?
Yes.
And Dorinda Noah?
Here.
Can you give them a form? Okay, thank you. I am going to review for you, and I'm gonna read it to you so I don't miss anything, because this is a special meeting that's called for the Article 46 sales tax. And because we're presenting with the overall meeting's law, this is the only item that we can discuss. It's not on the agenda. So, by majority vote, on February 7th, 2019, the trustees voted this far. A motion was made by Mike Frye for the board to approve the recommendation of the county manager regarding memorandum of understanding on the expenditure of Article 46 sales tax revenues over the next eight fiscal years. The motion is conditioned upon the agreement of the board of commissioners to jointly request that the local delegation have the MOU adopted by the general assembly in a local act. The motion was seconded by Bruce Briggs. Following discussion, Mr. Frye and Mr. Briggs agreed to a friendly amendment to the motion. The motion is also subject to the condition that the MOU expressly state that all revenue in excess of expenditures identified in the county manager proposal must flow to the Article 46 fund balance. Instead, fund balance can only be expended by the county on capital expenditures of the college. The motion is amended past nine to four. Any questions on that? Okay. On February 19th, 2019, the county commissioners vote to accept the action of the board trustees with the following addition. The parties will form a joint advisory committee to review requests for additional capital investments in college facilities, modeled after the Buckham School Capital Fund Commission, composed of five members. Two to be appointed by the county, two to be appointed by board trustees, and one committee member to be appointed by the other members. So, we're at the point where we need to respond to the county's counterproposal. Before I ask for a motion, we can do this one two ways. Now, are there any questions about this new proposal?
I would like to know, basically, the purpose of this council committee or whatever. I mean, why are they going to do that? I'm just not clear on what their responsibility is.
Can I answer that?
Yes.
I think the idea is, since we've had problems in the past that either the county is calling the money or ABTEC is calling the money, that there'll be two entities that have to say. So, it's a checks and balances, basically. So, that it's not spent too much for the wrong thing in ABTEC with future administrations, or the county does it in the wrong thing, i.e. the parking deck.
Following up on what Joe asked, what will be the powers in the reach of this committee?
Well, we had a committee set up. In that committee, there's three from ABTEC and three commissioners, plus president and everybody, president and county manager, attorneys. Everybody was involved. That's how we tried to come to this start with. That's the way I would hopefully that it would be going forward with it. It ends up with not, it's not a divided deal. It's a partnership between ABTEC and the county. That's the way it has to be, as far as I'm concerned.
I think the commissioner answered a question you didn't ask.
Correct.
You asked about the...
I asked their reach and their power.
To two in one committee.
Yes.
Well, do we know that?
Well, I serve on the school committee. And we review all the requests for review of budget. And we have a commissioner, Brownie, and Commissioner Beltzer on. And we make the decision. And that decision goes to county commissioners. And they approve or disapprove what we approve. But it's just another set of eyes and another discussion before the, before the requests are granted. So, if a county makes a request, we review that in the city. And then we make a motion on it and approve it or disapprove.
So, in other words, let me make sure I understand. If we, you and I are on the committee, and two commissioners on the committee and a member of the community at large, we approve what has been requested, send it back to the county commission, they can basically both know on it. And basically, our power is from the null and void at that point.
Well, null and void would suggest that they're not, that they're not recognizing our expertise, because we have people on there. Some of us have instructions back around right. And we make the recommendation, if they want to remodel, put a roof on, we figure out what the cost is, the square foot cost. And then we adhere to, yes, that's a good idea, no, it's not. But the primary purpose is to make sure that we stay within the budget. So, each school gets a budget. And when they make their request, we have to stay within the budget. If they make another request that goes outside the budget, then our job is to make sure that we don't do that. Because as far as we're on there, to make sure that we're following the rules of the budget. So, it takes about an hour and a half. I said probably two hours, we meet each quarter. Unless someone, like when the building collapsed, had asked for help. And then we have a call meeting to discuss how we would abate that. That's our role.
Basically, it's about who does, has some teeth, basically.
One question, is that, do I understand if it goes, the recommendation of that committee goes to the Buckham County Commissioners? Does that same recommendation come back to the board of trustees for their approval or disapproval?
So, I can address that, Judge. And what that does is bring into light the resolution that was passed last night by the county commission. So, if everyone will look at the back of your packet, just flip the packet over. And we'll see a, this was passed last, or signed last night, yesterday, March the 5th, by Mr. Brown. This is a new provision that addresses some of those concerns, not directly. But what it does is allow flexibility. It says that if the direction of the board, the joint advisory committee, will be formed by and between the county and the college, modeled after the Buckham County School Fund Commission, that's what's in the MOU. To this end, the board is open to other structures of appointment, membership, so long as the basic model framework is achieved. And the chairman is authorized, empowered, and directed with the approval of legal services from the county to do any and all other acts, to execute any document in his discretion and deemed to be appropriate to achieve the results contemplated by this resolution. Except that none of the above shall be authorized or empowered to do anything in contravention in any way to the specific provisions of this resolution. So, what the county has done, and I've talked to the county attorney about this, none of those details, the question you just asked, none of those details have been hammered out. So, this resolution allows the chairman to sign an agreement, as long as he and the county attorney agree that it does not contravene the spirit of what is trying to be accomplished. In my opinion, if this board were to say, we will agree to an advisory committee, but we want to get together and talk about the specifics, but that committee must make a recommendation back to this board so that this board can give the county commission its opinion. I don't think that would contravene anything. I think it could be set up so that that committee has to give a recommendation to both this board and to the county commission. Because I think everyone in the room appreciates, and if they don't know this, the Buckham County School Capital Fund Commission exists because the two school districts are funded according to need. So, you really do need a third party to decide who needs what. Well, this is ABTEC simply requesting money directly from the county. So, I see, I don't see that there would be a problem with this board wanting to say, we would agree to something like this, as long as that committee has to report back to this board first. So, that this board can then give an opinion to the county. Those details are up to you. And they've given the chairman flexibility to agree to those details.
But wouldn't it have been Buckham County, ABTEC, who went to this board and set up, saying, this is what we want? And if it's approved, why would we have to come back to this?
Well, in the end, and again, those details are completely up to you. But in the end, do you want to have an official say to the county commissioners before or at the same time that the committee makes a recommendation? Because it's possible, and I'm paid to worry about eventualities. It's entirely possible that the board, the majority of this board disagrees with the committee. So, then the question would be, well, how are we supposed to let the county know that? So, I'm just saying, all of those safeguards can be built into it under this...
I can see where the committee might have to come back to this body if they change from our original recommendation. But we recommend we spend $200,000 on that building's roof. And then they, the committee looks at it and says, yeah, we agree with that. Why would they need to come back to us instead of just moving it forward?
All of those details.
Unless they change, then bring those changes back to us.
And you can empower the executive committee to work out all those details. All of that's possible.
Why is there really a need for the committee in the first place? Why can this board trustees not be in some voice to the commission?
I think the idea is checks and balances. I think the county commission, I mean, we have a state law now, passed by Mr. Ramsey years ago, that said that the county would take over all of the construction of ABTEC projects. Now, that took us out of the equation. Yes, we can tell them what we want, but they don't have to do it. So, I think that it's, that's the idea behind it. And vice versa, if ABTEC decided they wanted to build some building we didn't need, and the county said, you don't need that, they need to be on there to tell them. Because ultimately, that's where we're getting the money.
Ultimately, the authority, however, is with the county commission.
That's right.
State law.
Okay. There's gonna be plenty more time for discussion, but I'm gonna do it officially. I'm going to ask for a motion. Let's see, I wanna work this. To accept what has been presented to you today.
Which is the entire?
The entire, including the amendment.
And with any motion, since the details have not been hammered out, I would recommend that any motion include you giving authority to someone on your behalf to work out those details. President, chair, project chair, executive committee. Their chairman is empowered to work out the details. So, it'd be my advice that any motion include you empowering somebody to similarly work out the details of it. So, that he doesn't have to come back to the full board.
So, what type of details, if I could ask that?
The discussion that's just happened, should the advisory committee hear from this full board before it makes any decisions? Should it report back to this full board? How will this full board express its displeasure if it doesn't like it? Those types of details. So, that those questions don't have to be answered later, they can be known up front.
Is that two proposals or just a board of...
That's just, that would just be the county chair and whoever you appoint working out those details. And that could be in a separate agreement between the two parties. Because, again, legally, this is very simple. And I think it was just said, in the end, the county commission decides what to follow. Yeah, so it could be, it could be a separate MOU that wouldn't need to come back before we do this, if you're in power.
I have to look at the minutes, see this again, how this was written.
I've just read, I wasn't there, but this is interpretation of how it's written.
I understand how it's written. But the last thing that I remember last night is if this board wanted, instead of a five-member board, a seven-member board. That's what I remember from last night.
I heard that as well.
But I don't remember the chairman being able to take care of the qualities of the picture, period.
Your chairman? You're saying your chairman?
Yes. So, I don't remember that being anything. And people said in the room, I don't think heard that either.
It does say that the board is open to other structures of the committee's appointment and membership, so long as the model of the framework is achieved. That is correct. But I, yeah, I think everyone in this room understands that there are details that have to be worked out. And the county didn't give them to us. And I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, at some point, some group's gonna have to work out those details. Because those details are not in this document. And that, in my opinion, can be done in good faith.
An example, I'm sorry, beg your pardon.
No, I'm...
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine.
An example might be, are we gonna have to take to this body a $5,000 sidewalk? Or are we gonna put a limit on the projects that have got to be approved, such as a million-dollar roof? That's, that's the kind of thing that would have to be worked out.
There are always details. And that can be done. But as college attorney, I would recommend, if this board wants, if the board wants to proceed today, that the board appoints somebody as its representative to work out the details.
Define what the chairman.
Or, yeah, or if the county commission has to have somebody else. But we would know who our representative would be for those details.
Mr. Campbell, this says, except that none of the above shall be authorized or empowered to do anything except or execute any document which is in contravention in any way of a specific provision of this resolution. So, are we tying ourselves to do exactly this?
They have not given, they have said to their chairman, you can't sign anything that violates the agreement that they've offered to us that is in contravention to it. So, he cannot agree to something different. But what I'm saying is, the county has not given this board the details of how the advisory committee would work. So, that's just gonna have to be worked out, period.
That's what, yeah, that's what's up.
So, no, the chairman, I agree, I don't think the chairman on his own... I don't want to give legal advice to the county of Buckham. My legal advice to this board is, you don't have the details. And you're right, Judge, I don't know that the chairman has the right on his own to work out all of those details. I agree with that. So, that's gonna have to be worked out between the two.
In your opinion, as a legal advisor, is this necessary for this board to negotiate with the other, with the chief commissioners to guess what's right and right there?
Are you asking, should we have to work out the details? Or should we, should we agree to an advisory committee at all?
That's right, do we need that?
Legally, no.
No.
Legally, it has always worked that this board submits its needs to the county, and the county funds them according to its discretion. So, legally, the advisory committee is not needed at all.
Chris, can we pull this out of it totally?
There has been a counteroffer from the commissioners. So, if this board were to reject the advisory committee, my, it would be up to the county to decide whether or not there's still an agreement or not. I can't give, I'm not gonna give an agreement for the county.
I'm not asking you as trustee, because I am two-sided in this deal.
But it's my understanding that's...
Where two sides, and I don't do a very good job of either one of them. I see the vote that, you know, and, but I'm saying, we have a five-person deal, and that's what I've heard. I never heard that our chairman would be able to set up and talk. It don't matter if it's Mary Ann, or if it's Dennis, or whoever it is. I never heard that. So, how do we erase that part? Setting up a committee is a different thing than setting up what this is. Am I wrong or right, or I don't know?
Again, and with all due respect, I don't know what was discussed at the county level, and whether this violates the spirit of what you understood as a commissioner or not. I try to keep it simple with this board. The county would like an advisory board. My best legal advice to you is either say no to that or say yes to that, but you're going to appoint somebody to work out the details.
Advisory board is okay, but why does it have to go back to the chairman?
Again, this is from the county. I can't answer that question.
Well, I don't remember that being part of it.
And again, this document came from the county commission, so I have no idea. I can't answer that.
We're being asked to look at something that's not very specific.
Correct.
It's kind of mushy.
Correct.
Mushy as ever.
It is, it is, the specifics are not included. The details of how the committee would operate are not included. And again, that can be worked out, but you're correct in that.
Chris, I have difficulty with that. I mean, the devil is in the detail, and we don't know what the details are. And so, I think we're being asked to look at something that we don't know what's in the future. So, I have, I have real difficulty with this.
So, just to point clarification, when it says that the commission will not do anything or execute any document which is in contravention in any way of specific provisions of this resolution, we're not talking about just number two. They're talking about the whole agreement.
That's correct, yes, sir.
That's right.
So, they're saying that this group has specific things to do, but only within the framework of what has been approved in the MOU and in the resolution. So, to me, it's clearly an advisory board to go look at proposals, to make recommendations on the proposals, negotiate if they think that, you know, there might be a better way to implement the use of the funds. But the funds that are included in this, the $30.5 million for capital maintenance and a projected 20, almost $20 million fund for unidentified buildings, cannot be changed by that commission.
That's correct, and that's a very good point. Let me make sure everyone understands. So, the county offered the proposal. You took your action, you approved it, subject to a couple things. All they have come back with is, they would like a five-member group to make a recommendation of how to spend the money. This group will not be able to change the agreement between the parties. Thank you, that's a very important point. And will just be making a recommendation of how the dollars could be spent.
And the money in here can only be spent for the bill on ABTEC capital programs.
Yes, sir.
And it sounds, it sounds to me like the chairman has been authorized by the commission to work out with us if we so choose to go back and have a conversation about how the committee's gonna work. And that's all it's looking to work to, correct?
Again, and the agreement says it would be modeled after the Buckham County. So, again, details have to be worked out between the parties. There's some good faith implied in this offer, that the parties will come to get it.
The main thing in the whole issue is, all this money is gonna be spent on ABTEC for us. Period. And that's...
We don't, we don't do anything with the budget other than make sure we don't exceed the budget.
Exactly.
That's all, and we have to make sure that all the money, that's earmarked, for whatever it's earmarked for, that that's carried out. When they present it to us, it has to be within the spirit of what it was originally written for. Unless there's an emergency, like when the building collapsed, and remove some money in order for the school to address the emergency and the danger of the emergency. But they lost that money. So, when we went back to the budget, that money was extracted from another project they wanted to do.
So, in this agreement or the projection theory, there's annual maintenance needs, and there's a $2 million buffer in that excess fund that is there in case of an emergency. So, you actually would have to go above the $2 million before you have to take it from anything else.
Other than that, you're just making sure that the execution is consistent with the mission.
And as the money moves up, or is into the 19 million, you can actually utilize some of that money in the process.
Right.
Okay, I'm back on board.
I'll make the motion that we accept the amended MOU as presented. Does that help, including the, which includes the last two boxes?
Okay. And do you want to say anything about empowering some group to work out the details of...
And I, I would recommend that executive committee be empowered to work out the details with the commission, commissions of the 19.
Well, I would just say with the commission, since they may need to have some additional conversations.
Absolutely.
So, the recommendations that the executive committee made, would that come back to us, or would that be a final?
I'm just, what my recommendation was to accept this, with the exception that if there are any details to be worked out, that our executive committee would work, work those out with the commission on how, how this committee's gonna work.
So, it would be final. Under his, the way he's wording his motion, the executive committee would have final authority to work out the details.
So, would be then, what if it were...
The executive committee decides, yes, sir. Under this motion, yes.
Do we have a second?
But that assumes, that assumes that the executive committee would review whatever their recommendations were with the rest of the board before going to the county commission.
That would make sense, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's the way we are hurting.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, but the board would not be voting.
Well, I understand that, but that is right. And I'll second the motion.
Okay, now, we say have some additional discussion. Thoughts before we take the final vote?
Well, I have to say that I take an exception to the wording that people say this $50 million has to all, or this money all goes towards capital projects, because it does. About $56 million goes towards operations in the next eight years and the last two years. So, for this whole proposal is followed, in my opinion, uses Article 46 money for operations, and it shouldn't, period. So, if we're gonna...
What shouldn't, I didn't hear it. What shouldn't?
Be used for operations instead of the capital, which is the intent of the 46 sales tax referendum. It's used 100% for capital or maintenance projects. You have $56 million that we're leaving on the table. If the county chooses to do, for whatever reason, that's their business. But as an ABTEC trustee, I don't believe that's right. And I think, because if the county ever wanted to have another 40% sales tax referendum, or even a bond referendum, then you forget it. And if the economy goes south, like it did in '08, '09, and the sales tax drops 25, 30%, then what are we gonna do? Because their projections are based on a 5% increase every year in perpetuity. But we all know that's not how it works. When the economy fa, excuse me, falters, so is the sales tax revenue. So, we are agreeing to something that either we're gonna get the shaft or the county is, or both, if there's an economic downturn. So, we're agreeing on this document to have $56 million go for operations. That's $56 million we could put into an endowment. That's $56 million we could start a new program. That's a lot of money. And yet, we're agreeing in this proposal to...
That's a lot of money and yet we're agreeing in this proposal to give that out. And I, I don't agree with that.
Okay, so there's a lot of projections made back when this was done originally, but to me, the heart of this discussion has been, the proposal has been that I believe acting county manager Wood came to the college and said, what do we need for capital for the next year, eight years? Did he come up with the numbers himself or did he work with the college?
We were at the table, we did not have time to say, and the numbers about maintenance and repair projects get more and more fuzzy the further out you get from this year. This year has worked nicely, we have done some wonderful work on the, um, the physical plan of the college and our deferred maintenance. Next year is already laid out, it will go as nicely, but to say that all 25 million has been planned, that's not a case.
25 million is what the college projects.
Well, that's what Mr. Wood projected, um, 3.1 million in 20 fiscal, 2020, and then it goes up by I think 5.4% each year until 2027 is 4.5 million. But what I'm saying is the projects that are out there toward 20 fiscal 2027, 2026 have not been identified.
Okay, but you had input into this budget process.
The original, the projects this year and for next year, absolutely, we had, we identified some critical needs and they have been addressed this year and the critical needs of next year will like that's.
And then the addition, the net addition of the ending available fund balance goes from 8.8 million dollars in 2020 up to 19.3 million dollars? Has that got identified with the building that's needed or is that, as I understand it, it was in case something didn't happen, a new program was implemented or there was some other need that can start off with this approximately 19.3 million dollars minus the $2 million buffer account? And so 17.3 million is totally unidentified for building needs, it could be used for maintenance?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say totally unidentified. We have a master facilities plan that we put together a number of years ago and that plan calls for a new arts and sciences engineering building, that's the building which is presently on hold. Nothing has been done to change that priority, so if at some point when we get to 2027 and there's 19.3 million available minus the 2 million that's supposed to remain and preserve, at that point, we would probably ask for that building again. I say probably because maybe needs will change. What do we do if the new general voters decides to bring a plant here in town, we've got to start some training for them and our plan right now calls for an arts and sciences engineering building. By 2027, that plan will change. Typically, a master facilities plan is good for about five years and we're a good three years into that right now.
Okay, but you have 17.3 million dollars.
To put toward that building, yes, according to these numbers.
And where we, so there's nothing in here that limits us to this amount, this is the floor.
That's, well.
We go back to the county commission and say, here's the building, here's the economic value to people of Bunkham County, and we'd like you to approve that and there's nothing that's in here that is prohibitive to doing.
Nothing, nothing, nothing. Right. And pay for that service on the.
So it's a long way of saying that this is a capital plan. And all capital plans, that part of, are going to have some questions.
Absolutely.
But this is the, make your best guess, a capital plan that this college actually needs to provide for its growth needs for the future during the term of this agreement. How do we prove that? And so why would we ask the taxpayers of Bunkham County, go one more dime than what we need? I'm a Democrat, I'm not a Bernie Sanders Democrat, I don't believe all money comes from the East Bunny and Santa Claus. This money comes from taxpayers of Bunkham County. We shouldn't be asking for more money to be used in this college if it isn't actually necessary and we can't identify what it's for. And this is what this agreement says. This is what we need, this is a good, being good steward of taxpayers' money. Now, if people feel that, that something should be done with the rest of the 40% sales tax, then I would recommend them going to the Bunkham County Commissioners and asking them to give a property tax decrease to the people of Bunkham County or to use it for something else. But we're getting what we need, what we do with the rest of the funds is another issue that the Bunkham County Commissioner should be affected.
I think you're overly looking for the, um, the spirit of the elect, of the vote to say of two or five 46 members. And I'm not calling this county, Madison County, I do not properly vote for them, but you have let out the spirit of the election, in my opinion.
That, well, the spirit of the election was to provide for the capital that was needed by ABTEC. And this agreement gives ABTEC the capital that it needs. Now, to say that there's a building plan and we should go ahead and build it, build it even though we don't need them, I think that's wrong. Things change over time. We should only be requesting the money we absolutely need based on what we know today and not asking for money to pursue building plans that are over and above us when those buildings aren't needed. I think that we have to be good steward of the taxpayers' money and not ask for anything else.
Are we going to give them a presentation of the old building and how bad it was and what we need from the old building? We're not looking at $3 million that needs to be done or defended, or we're not collecting money from our people on donations to do something about how the building?
Well, I can tell you that. There's 11 buildings. They're hiding buildings. And they're born from bad, what? They're born with money that, that we should wait for. We can ask people for any other, that's what we want, right? But we have a budget.
Can we turn that floor down? I think it's hard to hear.
Dr. Metcalfe.
I think it's the age, I think it's the.
Our start there. Cold weather outside.
Dr. Metcalfe, I can take you back to the, to your question, the, the plan that we were given does not take into consideration the end of the problem. Now, there's no money in here for the end of the problem.
But that does not keep us from asking.
Absolutely.
You are, you are correct.
I think that we can ask for any, but I think if I'm just looking at the reason why we got.
A building that we're using at a, and everybody says we're $2 million, we're supposed to make a difference. I don't think anybody in this room or at the county commission could say to not put their, because it's back to the same thing, there's 17, there's 19 million dollars that's going to be there, okay? And we need something for something, that's still part of this stuff. Not sitting on this property, but it's still part of this stuff. And I think, you know, there'd be no problem pulling money from that without a.
Yeah, so we could in fact ask for somebody in the end.
Well, you have $19 million.
2027.
Exactly.
Well, you have $19 million throughout here.
Even, even in that 19 million dollars, say we get into year 2025 and we need a bill and we're not providing enough money, instead of going and getting a bond which is 15 years, we can go to the local bank, we've got plenty to almost build it, but then we can make payments for three or four years and be done because this deal, you know, map rings up, this deal is sunsetting in 2021, whatever.
Exactly. 27.
It's 127. Okay, whatever, but the fact is, it's not on sunset because the county cannot accept the bill and that's, that's the way it is. So here they've made a promise that couldn't happen anyway with sunset, then the county, Bunkham County President's going to end up paying the half. And right now, this thing can't even think of a close sunset because the bills don't come due totally until 2034, 2035. So this gives us the hope. Is it perfect? I'll say it's not perfect, but we're walking this money down. We're measuring anybody at Bunkham County and take it away from my control, period. This is, this building, this property's money.
That's a good point, that's my case, is if we don't have an agreement in place, the county commission is not bound to do this.
Second, even, even if the amendment had it, no commission has to call, no commission do, they won't spend money somewhere else. There was no deal in this bill, it was voted in a city election. I got more votes than it did and I'm only in one district. 20% of the county voted, this bill paid 89,900 some dollars for the election, they bought an election in the city. That can't happen anymore. It has to be in a current year that, so. I will, I didn't vote for it, but I'm over here trying to defend it, I'm trying to hold the money here and that's what I'm doing.
And this is a floor. Guy's going to say, this is a floor, doesn't stop us to have more, but if we don't approve this, then the county can take it all back and we could end up with nothing. So I think the fiduciary duty is to approve this and then work for more.
I think we've, we've regurgitated the same thing over and over again. We've got a second, so.
All favor. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. To raise your hands, so we'll get it.
We have a quorum to transact business, so the motion has passed.
And we don't have to have a, just a majority?
No, not just a majority, but it's president's, by the way. Correct. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Before we do, I want to make sure Ms. Rice has everyone's votes, so she'll give her another motion.
Yes, you.
Well, that passed, so I was going to suggest we don't need a motion, approvals by our attorney and the county attorney. This is an ex parte agreement. We, I've always never had anything to do with this, it's ex parte, what Mr. Wood presented is ex parte, uh, I think we ought to have some input, I know we're, we're, we're in a sense a hostage to Bunkham County, of whatever they're going to give us or whatever we can get from, but there's common sense to that too, so I think Mr. Campbell and, and the county attorney ought to maybe get together and come back with the proposal that kind of.
Are you, are you speaking about the advisory committee?
Well, not necessarily, but to, but to iron out some of these problems that we have, that I have and some that others have, I'm sure, we'll come out there.
I'd be happy to discuss things with you and talk with the county attorney, yes, sir.
I think that'd be a start.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
To move.
So moved, second. All in, thanks.
Aye.
Good. Thank you.
Jim.